Good evening and welcome to the August 24th meeting of the Milton School Committee. As is our tradition, please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have three changes to the agenda. And because some of our new hires or new promotions couldn't make it this evening, we're going to remove the personnel update and have all five come at our next meeting, which will be September 4th. We're going to remove from the chair's report new positions. And we're going to add school committee calendar. I have one question for the committee on the calendar. And under finance subcommittee, we're going to remove the fourth quarter report. So with that, I see no one here, so Maura, I assume we have no one for citizen speak? And we'll move right to the superintendent's report.
Thank you Chairman Walker. We have in your packets tonight, and we've sent them to you electronically. A tremendous amount of work went into these handbooks. The high school student handbook, the Pierce student handbook, and very creatively, each elementary school personalizes the front of their handbook. And these handbooks from last June until yesterday go back and forth with our attorney. So that all the policies are up to date, all the laws and procedures that parents should be made aware of, and students, and you see the sign-off at the end of each of the handbooks. So I would ask you to approve the handbooks. And I want to recognize Charlene Roach, our principals, and our attorney Paige Tobin, putting a tremendous amount of work into these handbooks. And you should also note, they go home electronically.
Yeah. Environmentally correct.
Right.
Sounds good.
And we get 100% return.
So unless there are any questions, pause. I'm going to move, this is an omnibus motion, so I'm going to move that we approve the Milton High School Student Handbook, the Pierce Middle School Student Handbook, and the Milton Public Schools Parent and Guardian and Student Handbook section of all of the elementary school handbooks.
Second.
Moved by Walker, seconded by Donahue. On the motion, all in favor? Thank you.
And briefly, lots of anticipation this week. Today we had, I sent you pictures late this afternoon. We have 51 new teachers and staff members. They spent, I want to recognize President Ken Quigley from Curry College, under the leadership of Assistant Superintendent Sheehan. We have a phenomenal mentoring program. And you should know by DESI's regulations, we have to have a mentoring program. But this mentoring program has a new life. And every new teacher and staff member have a mentor. I told the new teachers today, our veteran teachers apply for these positions. Very small stipend, but for many people that I've seen go into administration, they list that mentoring experience on their way to their administration degree. Ken Quigley provides the facility at Curry. The mentors and the new teachers spend the day. He provides breakfast and lunch. And I got pictures all through the day of the foods and the faces of the new teachers. And it was, by all reports, a phenomenal day. Today, under Assistant Superintendent Sheehan's leadership, Dr. Pavlicek, Assistant Superintendent Sheehan and I met with our new teachers in the library. I give them, I use your data report in the presentation. I tell them the vision, I welcome them to the Milton Public Schools. My message today was, "We work for you." Your success, I said, people don't come to the Milton Public Schools for Mary Gormly or the administrators. I said, "It's the next teacher and the next classroom, and their success is our success. And we're here to help them succeed." And I told them about this community, this school committee, the high expectations. And I said, "Treat every one of these children as if they were your own, with your own dreams that you have for your own family members." And it was a very positive morning. I want to recognize Paige Appolito, Appolito, Glenn?
Yes.
From Town Hall, who goes over all of their benefits. Barbara Pakalnides goes over payroll. Janet Sheehan does the particulars of the curriculum and personnel issues. Very successful. Then the highlight always seems to be when Jonathan Redden, Karen Cahill, and Ben Kelly cooked the hamburgs and hot dogs on the grill. And all the rest of the administration served the new teachers. So one year we went to sandwiches, and they said that we liked being served better. So you should have seen their faces, the Milton Times attends. And I know all of you were busy and working today, but in future years, you would enjoy it. And a lot of smiling faces. Then they went off for the afternoon with their respective principals and department heads. Tomorrow they have a morning session on technology in the Milton Public Schools, a pizza lunch. And in the afternoon, Assistant Superintendent Sheehan and Dr. Spalding will give them a training, a teach point in our evaluation process and procedure. And so I saw them here really early, and I saw many of them just leaving a few minutes ago. And so we have high expectations for these new staff members and teachers into the Milton Public Schools. It was a very, very positive, positive day and positive week. So on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, we want to, again, publicly recognize those individuals. The handbooks we went over, we have an article in the Times tomorrow. We were sending out an email last Friday, all our principals. I'm forwarding you all the principals' emails that they send to their parents. But again, on the front of our webpage, I would encourage anybody watching, if you have any questions about the food service program or the free and reduced lunch program, Jackie Morgan's number and link are on the front of the webpage. Community schools, Pam Dorsey has sent out. But we can always miss a parent or guardian of family. On the front of the webpage, I encourage you to contact Pam Dorsey. Jake Smith can be communicated with via email. His email is on the front of the website about your bus passes. Our athletic director, Eric Cargill, our new athletic director, reported in today. Again, I repeat, not being an athlete. They're already having their, what do you call it?
Yeah, all their practices.
Practices.
Early practices coming in.
And then they're already, you know, having cuts before school and choosing their teams. And so the athletic program, I think that you'll be very, very pleased meeting these new administrators. And Eric Cargill has done a phenomenal job as the new athletic director. Our family liaison, Marty O'Keefe McKenna, I'd like to have her come to one of your meetings. She is in every meeting we have at Central. And her hands and her involvement in every aspect of this school district, we stopped yesterday, and I said, "She is truly amazing." And as a result of your advancement budget, we didn't have a family liaison. And she is, I would say that she's on the phone with 20 to 50 families every single day. So Marty McKenna is very active before school. Our music lessons, the information starting at grade four about the applied music lessons, that, those contacts are on the front of the webpage also. And so any information individuals can find on the website. They can access my office or email any one of our principals or myself directly. And in closing, we, I'd like to recognize Maura Downs and Bob Mayhew from Consolidated Facilities. We highlighted in my last email last, the Milton Women's Club gave out grants to community groups. And they gave us a grant of, Ms. Downs, how much? Excuse me? $5,000. And Bob Mayhew and Maura ran with this, and they researched the Little Free Libraries. And Bob Mayhew personally took over, and in front of every one of our schools, and the high school one will be coming. Well, I should have had Dr. Donahue give this presentation. His family has enjoyed the Little Free Library in front of every school. So the Little Free Library, families can go and take books out of the free library. That's the size of half of this table. And then you're encouraged to put books back. And so in front of every one of our schools, for those who can't get to the Milton Public Library, and we've gotten phenomenal responses to people finding, surprisingly, these Little Free Libraries. So Ms. Downs found one at a beach on the Cape, and she decided that there should be one in front of every Milton Public School. And the Milton Library is also putting out in the communities these Little Free Libraries.
So Maura, if we had a live cameraman, we'd put the camera on you right now, but...
Is there anything you want to add?
Can I ask a question? So I think I read the article in the Times too. I know that, I'm sorry, but are the books all filed through Milton Public, like our library? Or so anyone, so you can bring books from, so that's another good place to donate your books? Like excellent, okay, great.
And the principals, good point, remember Verella. The principals are watching them, they're near the front of the school. So if the books are overflowing, they'll bring them in. And they're very, people already have ideas about posting little book reviews on the front. So on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, to the Milton Women's Club, and there's a plaque on each one that they were donated via the Milton Women's Club. And lastly, the call that we take the most frequently and the most often this week is that the first day of school for students in grades one through 12 is this next Wednesday. And our kindergarten and preschool children go Tuesday, September 6th. So I'm very happy to report to you, we are ready. We are ready and very, very anxious. And as in closing, I said to the new teachers, "I hope you do have the same anticipation in your stomach that all of us do," and the 4,000 children. And we're looking to a phenomenal school year. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that we're better because of the school committee and the leadership that you give us and the support. The public should know on a daily basis. We've been together for the last, I think, 48 to 72 hours. And again, always working towards what's the best for Milton Public School students. So thank you.
So speaking of being together, I would like to thank all of my colleagues for what I thought was a very productive planning retreat on Monday evening. And for the viewing public, we'll be probably over the next few weeks, be able to tell you more, with more specificity, what our thoughts are on goals for the district for 2016, 2017. So thank you.
Can I just comment? I wanted to thank you for bringing, for being organized so well and for bringing in just a really good facilitator from MASK. He's great, and I think he kept everyone on point, and we accomplished a lot, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
And we should say that was Glenn Kuchar.
Yeah, Glenn Kuchar.
From MASK Association of School Committees.
Yeah.
He did facilitative for us two years ago and was back this time.
Yeah, he was great.
Did a great job.
Thank you very much.
So in your green folder, you have a copy of the school committee calendar. Our meetings for October are currently scheduled for October 5th and October 19th. I would like to ask the committee if we could make the second October meeting either October 12th or October 26th.
Either of those dates is fine.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Chairman Walker, what did you say, which dates?
October 12th or October 26th.
It's the Wednesday of Columbus Day, so I believe it's Yom Kippur.
Is it?
So maybe the other one. It's October.
26th?
26th, I think. That would actually work well for me.
Yeah, I could do either, so I could do 26th, yeah.
Okay. So move that we change our second October meeting to October 26th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Ms. Verella?
Yes.
No, thank you. Under finance subcommittee, we have approval of vendor warrants. We have vendor warrant number seven dated August 11th and the amount of $182,291.52. I would move that we approve that warrant.
Second.
Moved by Walker, seconded by Verella. All in favor? Unanimous. Dr. Pavlicek, have we, have we seen warrant number nine?
No, it was just prepared.
Okay.
So it's right here.
I'm going to defer that until...
But I wanted to have people have a chance to look at it.
Yes, that's fine. I'm going to defer that to our next meeting. And now, the moment you've all been waiting for. The Donahue and Verella Show Policy Subcommittee.
So I'd like to start by thanking my colleagues on the subcommittee. Ms. Verella and Ms. Everhard, we've done a lot of work over the past few weeks. And their help has been, has been extensive and appreciated. And what we have before you tonight would not be here without them or Charlene, who has put a lot of this together and is responsible for having a lot of the materials in front of you in an organized fashion. Because as I can tell you, when we come out of subcommittee, sometimes the material's all there, but it's all sort of helter-skelter. So with that, so I'm going to bring us back to the commemoration policy, which we left off in June. And we had a first reading. And some of the members had some, I thought, insightful comments. We invited Maria Trazi to come back and to speak with all of us who wanted to come. It ended up being the other members of the subcommittee and I and the administration there. And I thought we had a very interesting conversation about her thoughts on commemoration and her input into our, into our policy. So what you have in front of you, you have a red-penned version of the policy. And you have a clean copy of the policy. And the red pen copy has several rounds of edits incorporated. So the strike-throughs are obviously deletions. And bold type is addition, underline is addition, and red ink is also addition. So I'm happy to entertain any questions or thoughts that anyone has.
Oh, Dr. Craig.
I just have one question. And I'm sorry if this was answered in a previous go-round, but I don't have notes about it. And it's not a disagreement, it's simply a question. Under Section B, immediate commemoration, the first paragraph, it says that the memorial will be removed either within four school days or before the individual's funeral, whichever comes sooner. Can, can you just explain the reasoning behind that for me, please?
So the four days is somewhat arbitrary. But the purpose of the immediate commemoration is to permit members of the school community to have a sort of focal place in the schools where they can express their grief or bring condolence cards or their thoughts of condolences. And then to sort of permit, there's an endpoint to that, to sort of permit an end to that immediate phase of the, of the process. And it's designed, the wording is designed so that we can then present the family with the products of that process, if they would like it. Whether it's a large card that all the staff has signed or, you know, a number of cards that students or colleagues have brought in, things like that. So the four days is a bit arbitrary. If people have, you know, funerary traditions that are multi-date or multi-week or multi-month, we didn't want it to sort of extend indefinitely or what seemed, would seem indefinite. But that's the reason for the time limit.
But what if their funerary tradition was incredibly quick?
Right.
Because there are some. So that if you were, had to be buried according to religious tradition as soon as possible, then that would mean that in some cases, a memorial would be precluded by that.
Yeah, I wouldn't think that, I wouldn't think that there would be, things would happen so quickly that there wouldn't be an opportunity to collect items or to, to have, you know, some sort of immediate process. I would, I wouldn't, you know, I would expect at least there to be one day or a portion of a day where that was the case. And if, I would think that if that was the, if that was the case, then, you know, that would certainly be an extenuating circumstance. And, you know, we could, we could have the schools open on a weekend or a holiday if, if that was the case. But the intent is not to exclude somebody on that basis.
Would it be possible to include something like except under exceptional circumstances or extenuating circumstances? I'm thinking that if someone who is Jewish, for instance, who died on a Friday afternoon, the funeral, the burial would have already taken place by the time Monday morning came around, which according to the wording here would preclude any sort of memorial, because the funeral came first.
I would...
What if we, in those circumstances, what if we, I mean, if we made a friendly amendment to say that it would always be four days, no matter, I don't want to say no matter whatever, or due to certain religious circumstances. I think because, because Maria Trazi did advise us that it, just like you said, the students will need a mourning process, so they need to come back for that. But she also advised us that, you know, in her extensive work with communities and schools with this, that that kind of four-day window seems to be the most appropriate, that it gives them enough time, but then that they, the school needs to go on to it, you know, a new stage of the grief process.
Right.
So, I mean, would that, would that work? That we could either do some kind of amendment to that?
Yeah, I would, I would suggest, you know, at least a day, you know, it should last at least a day. You know, because I don't want, if, if, I don't want to, again, I don't want to intrude on somebody's, you know, mourning, somebody's personal mourning process or a family's mourning process. So I would like, I would like for it to be wrapped up, if possible, by the time they have a funeral or some religious event. So I would think at least a day or two days would be fine. I'm open to suggestions as to where specifically to, to add that in the language.
So one other possibility is to, at the end of that paragraph, to say that in instances where for religious or other reasons, the funeral needs to occur more immediately, the chair and the superintendent could make an exception to this policy.
I think that's excellent wording. So I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
So at the end of that first paragraph, under Section B, immediate commemoration, in instances where for religious or other reasons, the funeral may need to occur more immediately, the chair and the superintendent could make appropriate exceptions to this policy. The chair and the superintendent.
You have heard it?
Yes, oh, that's a great, that works for me, sorry.
So with the friendly amendment, I move approval of policy FFA.
Second.
Moved by Walker, seconded by Verella. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
All right, so next on the list is our policy, LBCA, Relations with Non-Public Schools. And when we left off discussion of this, I believe it was back in June as well, the conversation centered around two points. One was whether there was a limit that we could place on the number of times a specific school came up to us for approval. And then the other comment that I believe my colleague, Dr. Craig, had made was if we could incorporate some of the additional language in the DESI guidelines discussing our relationship or non-relationship beyond simply approving the existence of a school with that school. So that, the language was added. And Chair Walker was in contact with council. And it was their opinion that we could not place a limit on the number of times that a group could apply, since it was our statutory duty. So but for the bolded sentence at the end of the second paragraph of Roman numeral one, there has not been a change. And I will move approval.
Second. Moved by Donahue, seconded by Walker. Any discussion? All in favor?
Well, I just had one question. One question. Dr. Donahue, you said that according to council, we couldn't limit the number of times they applied. Can we limit the timeframe in which they apply? Like, you can't apply any sooner than?
Right. So yes, under the reapplication section, we've said that if there's a deficiency, if they are rejected based on a deficiency in the first two broad columns or broad boxes of either their program or their administration practices and procedures, we get, there's a four-month window where they can't reapply. And then after they reapply, again, earlier, it says there's, there's an expected 12-month approval process timeline. And if they are denied approval because of a, the lack of a fire permit or something like that, they can apply immediately once they have received that, that permit. So yes, we can, is the answer to your question. And yes, we have inserted those limits, or some limits.
Yes, I just remembered that the four months seemed really quick to me for having those kinds of major deficiencies. But given that there's a 12-month window after that, seems fine.
Yeah. That was our thought too. We, you know, four months would be a very quick turnaround to completely reevaluate things. But we didn't want to sort of get into a situation where you'd be talking about taking up two potential academic years if somebody actually had, you know, addressed deficiencies.
Right.
Dr. Craig, are you satisfied?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Moving, we approve policy LBCA.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous.
All right, so for our next three policies, these are time-sensitive policies. So I'm going to start by moving that we invoke our expedited process whereby we can, we can do the first and second readings tonight and come to a finished product at the end of tonight's meeting.
And that requires superintendent concurrence? Do we have the superintendent's concurrence?
Yes.
I second. On the vote to invoke our expedited approval process, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Ready for approval, Dr. Donahue?
Wonderful. All right, so first, we have Teaching About Drugs, Alcohol, and Tobacco, policy IHAMA. This was sent to council both because of the changes, the annual changes to our handbook and because of the opiate prevention laws that were signed into law this spring. So it has been somewhat extensively edited by council. And I think it, I think it reads a lot better, and it seems like a much more updated policy. You should have both the old copy, the red-penned copy, and the new cleaned copy in your packets.
Which one are we on?
So we are on Teaching About Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs, IHAMA.
Move approval of policy IHAMA.
Second.
Any discussion? On the motion, all in favor? Unanimous. Unanimous.
All right. Next is Drug-Free Workplace Policy, that is Policy GBC. And again, this was sent to council as part of our handbook updating process and with relation to the new opiate laws. There were some minimal edits. You again should have the old policy, the red-penned copy and the new clean copy. So I will move approval of the Drug-Free Workplace Policy.
Second. Moved by Donahue, seconded by Walker. Any discussion? On the motion, Ms. Verella?
No, I was, I thought you were going to say all in favor, so I was ready to vote.
Okay. On the, on the motion, all in favor? It's unanimous.
All right. Okay, so last but not least, we have Alcohol Used by Students in the Public Schools, JICH, which has been renamed Alcohol, Tobacco and Drug Use by Students Prohibited, JICH. So again, this was edited for similar reasons and has been gone over by council over the past few months. And I have to say, I like, I like a lot of the updates. I like including tobacco and drug use specifically along with alcohol and making explicit in the title that its use is prohibited. So I will move approval of JICH.
I'll second.
Moved by Donahue, seconded by Verella. And I do have one question, this is something that Dr. Donahue and I talked about. My, my wife is also an educational consultant and encountered a situation with a client where a student had a prescription for medical marijuana. Does this, would this policy accommodate that or how would we treat that situation?
So medical marijuana being legal in the state of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I would, I would imagine that this in conjunction with our medication administration policy would, would accommodate that. The medication administration policy is currently working its way through Subcommittee. So we can specifically reference that in, in the medication administration policy and if you would like, I think it makes sense to insert a reference to that here as well and certainly a cross-reference down at the bottom.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Ms. Verella?
Yeah, and at our, our recent meeting, I had asked, because we are addressing that policy, and I've asked for Nurse Gibbons to come to because she, because she's, she's worked on it for all the legal edits, so I'm sure that she would have the most up-to-date information on exactly what the specifications are with legal, legal marijuana, legal, I'm sorry, medical marijuana because it's, it serves as a, you know, just, just like an EpiPen, I mean, a student would need it, it's, you know, it's a script that they have been written. So I think I agree with Dr. Donahue that we can cover that in that policy because it probably falls under that better.
Great. So trying to finish some word here, wording here.
So I'm happy to, take, take the vote and approve subject to later revision or we can do the medical administration on this policy together, what's your preference?
I think, well, I'll defer to the superintendent if she would like to have this policy settled before school starts.
I'd like to settle.
Okay.
Okay.
So I may suggest a, a new third paragraph that says, "Use of prescribed controlled substances shall be in accordance with our medication administration policy."
That's great.
Do we want to say from a licensed physician?
Yes. Prescribed controlled substance from a licensed physician, thank you. Use of prescribed controlled substances, comma, from a licensed physician, comma, shall be in accordance with our, the medical, the medication administration policy. And then that, this policy, letter JLCCA-R.
Can I just ask this aside? Who comes up with those policy, numerical medical structures?
Wish I could tell you.
MASC, I believe.
Yeah, just always wondering. Just because Dr. Donahue always has to be like, "Policy JTF-1A."
External numbers.
So is everyone clear on the revision to JICH?
Yes.
Okay. On the amended policy, all in favor? Unanimous.
All right.
And we don't have anyone from Citizens speak? Unless our Milton Times reporter would like to speak?
I'm sorry.
Just joking, just joking. Next meeting agenda items? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I just have one question.
Okay.
I didn't get to it when you were looking at the calendar.
Yes.
But one of our meetings after the 26th that we just amended of October 26th, the November 2nd meeting.
Yeah.
Where we scheduled superintendent evaluate, evaluations, that is the start date for the school committee conference that's going to be in Hyannis, that three of us are going to be, at least three are going to be attending.
Okay.
So that might be a problem.
That is a problem.
Okay.
So we could entertain the idea of moving that meeting to the 9th.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, let me just check.
Dr. Donahue?
That's fine with me.
That we may move the November 2nd meeting to November 9th. Dr. Donahue?
That works out well.
Okay, move that we, move the meeting currently scheduled for November 2nd to November 9th.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Walker, seconded by Craig. On the motion, all in favor? Unanimous. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Donahue, seconded by Verella. All in favor? Thank you.